We'll go ahead and get started. This is considered a work session for the budget. Councilwoman Alexander sent us an email with some concerns that she had in regard to the budget. And I thought that that warranted us meeting again to try to talk through some of those and see if we can get some resolution on the budget. I actually felt like about three weeks ago, in one of our work sessions, that we had a nod from every one in regard to the budget, that it was something that you could support. And so I guess I was a little taken back at our last council meeting, how the vote went, but that's okay. Everybody has their own, has a right to vote the way they choose, and I'm not faulting that. But it is important that we try to gain some unity in this process and find a budget that everyone can support and a budget that we can pass and move on. If today, in our council meeting, the second reading, if it does not pass, then as far as the budget's concerned, it's, as it exists right now, is dead. And we will then have to use our next special call meeting to start a process of an ordinance to submit to the state to ask for permission to continue to operate the city under the current budget, under some pretty restrictive terms, until we can get a budget approved. My recommendation certainly was not necessarily written in stone, as far as I'm concerned. My recommendation was to try to get us moving in some direction. We had met for, I don't know, six or eight weeks, and we're not making any progress as far as heading in a direction toward a budget. We were just changing the budget from one work session to the next, and then when we met, then we would change it again. And I think Cill made comment that it was confusing, and it was, as many times as it was changed. I guess the trick behind that is to do away with or not look at the previous one, but look at the last one that we had agreed on to change and go from there. So, you know, we're just looking for a way to get our budget passed, not just for the sake of passing a budget, but to pass a budget that'll work, that we feel like that will work going forward. And the one that I presented, I felt like that it would work moving forward. A 20 cents increase, which would have put it over $1, $1.233. So, you know, having said all of that, I think it's important that we come together and try to compromise where we can, where we feel like we can, and try to reach a consensus on a budget. And after this work session today, I would like for us to be at that point where we have a budget that we can move into our special call meeting at 8:00 and approve second reading, subject to any changes that might be suggested today. So, having said that, I'll open it up to any conversations that anybody wants to make.
Okay, I'm gonna start. That's okay. I looked through, and I hate to say this now that you've said that about the number of budgets. I compared a few headings, three different budgets. And so I have a question about, for instance, the telephones, recreation department. At one time, we discussed buying them out. But I noticed in this last budget, and I know that it also includes the 20 cent increase, that it rose from 17,000 to 20,000. Under the Swimplex, the other contractual services went up from 6,500 to 10,000. Their overall operating supplies went up from 12,250 to 200, to 25,000. So I thought, wow, that's quite an increase. And I don't know how much of the Swimplex items can be bid, you can get bids on. I don't have a clue about that. Somebody will have a briefie. But, of course, and I had shared with all of you in my email about calls, people coming to my store, emails, yada, yada. But the thing that has struck me hardest has been a group of businessmen, small businessmen, have come forward and said, "Do you realize that your 20 cent tax increase is gonna be like 24 percent with your business?" And having gone through the recession in 2007, and it has taken us up into the last few years to really, really get grounded again, and I thought, to be hit with that kind of tax for a small business? People on fixed incomes, it'd be hard on them. People on the lake, they got the money. But for a small business, and we thank the city of Winchester what is best for the city, but the people make the city, the small businesses fund the city. And I'm sorry, I don't think I can go above 10 cents. I shared with some of these gentlemen that this fund balance and whatever we have done that has gotten us in the red, I don't know what has precipitated this, why we didn't stop it before now. I mean, I don't know why it wasn't addressed before this year. But at the same time, I just don't think I can go above 10 cents. I'm sorry. And I just think we need to rework a few things, hopefully hurriedly, in the budget to get along with just the 10 cent.
One other thing that I failed to mention, and you've got that in front of you. It was mentioned that it looked like that, I forget how it's put, that a lot of, or most everything, had been put back into the budget. I asked Martha Carol and Beth to prepare an Excel sheet there that you'll see that has orange and green and blue on it. The orange indicates the increases on the budget from the time that we first started looking at a budget. And the green indicates the cuts that have been made, and the blue is the total by departments. If you look at that, which includes capital outlays that have been cut, that's about $500,000 that was cut. If I'm looking at it correctly, that was cut from the budget, from the very first time that we worked on. So, you know, we have made significant cuts. Going back to the 10 cents, I personally think 10 cents is too low. That'd give us about 200, a little over $200,000 toward our revenue, and I'm not sure that's gonna put us in a comfortable position after this next year, as far as the reserves are concerned. That's part of my concern, is this, what the state is looking for us to keep in reserves. I mean, that's what we've got to try to maintain and keep up. And I don't, I just don't think that 10 cents will be enough to do that. 20 cents would have been enough to have got us through the next couple of years, and we were anticipating some things happening in our local economy that would bolster that going forward and could hopefully move us in the right direction and keep our fund balance at a level that it should be. But I appreciate your comments and your concerns and that suggestion of 10 cents. Any other ideas? Do we know, Martha Carol, I know you don't have, you can't calculate that in your head, but do you know what 10 cents would do to our fund balance over the next few years?
If we took, to 10 cents, it would roughly bring us down close to between $300,000 and $500,000 at the end of the next year.
At the end of next year.
Or not the end of '17, but the end of '18.
Yeah. So then, if that number is correct, and if nothing else happened during that 12-month period, in order for us to maintain a level of $1 million, 1.1, 1.2, somewhere in that range, we're gonna be looking at making up, at that point, making up about $900,000. And, you know, I know that we will manage our budget going forward, but, you know, I wonder where we will get or come up with that much money at 10 cents. I mean, at that point, we would be looking at another tax increase.
I'm just afraid, if we keep it at 20 cents, there are a lot of small businesses that haven't been around as long as I have, and it's gonna impact them greatly.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I mean, none of us would want to, you know, want taxes to increase. I mean, I don't, first, I mean, I don't, because it'll impact me. It'll impact each one of us, and it'll impact, you know, people different ways. But I don't know how else we're going to, if we've already cut, including the capital outlays, about a half a million dollars, I mean, what else are we gonna cut to try to be at a level at the end of next year to move forward into the next year? I mean, I don't know what else we're gonna be able to do, other than begin to look at cutting service.
Well, I've always said, let's give a bonus instead of a percent raise, because that just keeps inflating more. You know, every time you put 2% this year, 2% next year, if you give a bonus, that don't add to that. Bonus is not adding to it next year. And I know we've given 2% to 3% raise every year, nobody else has done that. That's the reason I'm just giving a 2% raise. Counties getting one this year, they don't get it every year. School teachers getting one first time in three years. Social Security hasn't had one in three years. I mean, we just keep passed out 2% and 3% raises, and it keeps inflating. The salary's all up. I think we need to give bonuses instead of raises.
And that was one of the options that we looked at, a scenario that we looked at. And in my recommendation, it was purely a recommendation, I looked at 1.5%, as opposed to, what was it, 500, the bonus, what was it at that time?
$500.
So, you're right. I mean, bonuses are a one-time thing that year, and it's not growing their salary as year over year over year, as a raise does. So, I mean, you're right from that standpoint.
That way, a man making, well, say he's been here 15 years, and he's making more money, they all do. But then somebody's been here on a year or two, he goes out and talks about how much he's made and how much the other. Who mistreats me? Give him bonuses and we'll look at it.
Well, the 2% is based on job performance, just like it has been since 2011 or 2012. And I will say this, as far as the county goes, the last three years, one year they received 50 cents, which is more than 2%. This year, it is 2%. One of those other years in the last three years, they received a 25 cent raise, and in one year, they didn't receive anything. And that's the last three years. This year, you're correct, they are, they did pass the budget last time at 2%. Which is not a lot of money, if you're making $14, $15 now.
That's right.
But ours has been based on job performance. Beth and the department heads work together and have evaluations. That employee may get it, and they may not get it. But just because we budget it, doesn't necessarily mean we won't spend it.
No, you think they're not gonna spend it all?
I think that's up to Beth and the department head.
If somebody don't get any, is somebody gonna get 4%, 6%?
No, this is 2%.
It's locked in at 2%.
2% is most anybody can get.
And it has been 2.5%.
But the ones that don't get anything, does that money stay in the budget?
I think they're all gonna get something if they're doing, if they're going forward in their work. If they're not doing a good job, you know, it's gonna remove those folks from the payroll, from the job. But I think you're gonna see across the board that most of those people are working and trying to do a better job to earn that 2% or 2.5%. Spend 2.5% for, what, three or four years. That's based on the study that we, that we paid about $20,000, I think, in 2011. It's our job, I think, to fund that.
What is the difference?
I'm very comfortable with the 2%. I wish it was 2.5%.
I wish it was 5%.
I understand.
Wherever you, taxes are going up 25%, you've got to look at, where's it coming from? Where's it going to?
Well, the average tax that this 20% is causing is about 24% to 25%.
There it is.
But I know that we didn't look at it that way. We looked at it as a 20 cent increase. I don't think we actually, in our conversations, were thinking percentages. I think we were looking at 20 cents to fund our fund balance.
Right.
But I think if we don't do it this year, you're gonna be right back here next year or the next year, asking the taxpayers to go up again on their tax rate.
And in the past few years, traditionally, I think the last three years, we've had two to three employees a year that don't get it, which is not a substantial amount. The way I've responded to that is if they had an unsatisfactory evaluation, they didn't get the raise in July, but we did bring them back in six months and reevaluate. Usually more, half of them, at least, get it then, at that point, so they just lost half a year. Some years, we have one or two that don't get it at all.
Get out of here, Beth. You know as well as I know, some of these employees, how they've been doing the city. We've discussed that. I mean, they don't need anything.
And that's up to the department head to measure that in their evaluation.
But, I mean, who does evaluation? Are you in the department head?
The department heads or the supervisor, whoever they work directly under. And I've been working, actually, I was working on it prior to budget, and I kinda stopped, and I've been fooling with it a little bit more, looking into some other places to see where we were at. And we fall below, in most cases. And I've been very conscious of trying to compare us only to businesses, or cities of the same size. You know, not necessarily our neighboring cities, but somewhere, you know, in the 7,000 to 10,000 population. And I really feel like that's part of the reason we're losing some of the people. So, I understand totally, and I'm not against the bonus, if it's, you know, enough that they feel like they're being compensated for their efforts. But I do know that our employees are our greatest asset, and if there was somewhere else that we could cut before we cut that, that would be my recommendation.
Martha Carol, do you know what the 2% adds to the salary?
It was right at $60,000, $63,000 with the 2%. Because we put in the money for the other already.
So you're looking at about 27,000 difference between a bonus of $500 as opposed to a 2%. But as Willie pointed out, next year, if we were to go, stay at a percentage of salary, then that percentage is a higher amount. So, you make a good point. Okay, anyone else? Any ideas?
What about some of these contributions? Do you think we still need to give, much as we're giving on contributions?
Well, I think we had them all just about pulled out at one time, and then we started looking at the budget, and then the council went back through and decided that they wanted to put some things back in.
Mr. O'Leary, I did receive notice from Greg O'Neill yesterday that that wasn't advised. He did not advise us to reduce.
Well, can we go down there and tell them that they don't hire earlier and stay hired later? We give that kind of budget, is what that letter says.
What he's referring to is we sent out the information on the library, because there had been some question while we were regulated to not reduce it. So we did send that to Greg O'Neill to get some advice on that, whether that was advisable or not. And I was not here yesterday afternoon, but I did receive a message that it was not advised. That's the only one, I don't have page numbers, and I apologize, but that's the only one that is regulated.
If you cut them all out, other than the library, that's a, just figuring in my head, that's about $24,000, I guess. Cut everything out but the library.
$24,250.
Okay. You've got a better head than I do.
I'll do it one more time.
No, I mean, that's worth a thousand dollars. Anyone else? Gene, you have a point?
I voted for budget, the way we have it.
It's $24,250 minus without the library.
Do we understand, do we have a good understanding of this reserve and where we would be, where we would be if we didn't do anything at the end of next year? Where we would be at 10 cents? Where we would be at 20 cents? Do we understand that? Do we understand that that's important, that we try to get to a level to where we can begin to maintain that reserve? I'm just asking a question. I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot. I just wanna make sure that we all understand the importance of that, I guess, of trying to work toward that. Well, Cill has made a suggestion of 10 cents. Gene's reiterated that he voted for the budget at 20 cents, the way that it was presented. But we've gotta, you know, we need to reach a consensus on what the majority of the council can support and continue to support in order to pass the budget.
Mayor, I'd be happy to say, I have, Gene, I'd be happy to support the 20 cents. I think it's what we need to do for the city's welfare and to move forward with the same services and try to maintain and keep our employees that we have. It's certainly less expensive to, I think, help our employees that stay with us is to try to hire and find new employees and train those folks, as far as the employees go. But I certainly thank you to approve the 20 cents.
I get the feeling, then, that we've got a couple that still support the budget that was passed on the first reading, but we may have three, the majority, that might not support it. And that's not where we need to be.
I'd like to see 5 cents cut down to 15 cents. I can live with that.
They rained down on me.
Well, we know, we all know, we'd all agree that it's going to impact everyone. We would all agree that no one wants to see a tax increase. But we should also all agree that that's why we're here, is to make our decisions when it comes to, you know, keeping the city continuing to offer the services that the citizens have enjoyed for years, and to still have a manageable, manageable tax rate, especially compared to other communities. At one time, you had given us, Martha Carol, the other cities' tax rates around. I don't know if, I don't think I've got that handy to read, but I think even at that, we would be, of our local communities, we still would be lower than anyone else than Estes Springs. Is that right, Councilwoman?
We would actually be cheaper than that. Our, our city taxes together.
Okay. So, combination, then, we still are, but...
We'd still be lower.
Still be lower. Yeah.
But now, Cill brought up this telephone. I thought we was gonna take that telephone in the parks out. The other town's not doing that, are they? So why should we put $17,000 for telephones? I mean, we got to have some.
We, the reason we left that in and put that amount is, one, we have contracts on a lot of them, and we're gonna have to either purchase... we have contracts on a lot of them and we're gonna have to either purchase the contracts to get out from under it, which would take that amount, then we're out from under it, but we've got to be able to purchase the contracts. And to be quite honest, we haven't had time to call and see exactly what that amount is. We can, we can try to do that.
We need to see that, I mean.
To see exactly what the amount is, and it may be a couple thousand less, so.
Then on a, I see on the tourism, we had in there, what was that?
We added four to that. Whatever it is, we had added four, correct?
Tourism. Well, that's because we were gonna get another floor to go with it, wasn't it?
That's the back of the second page. Third, third page, 701. And we originally started out with 10 and then it got cut. It's hard to remember at what point we did what. And then it reads eight there, but there's probably a $4,000 revenue line coming in, so it's actually $4,000.
Remember that had to do with the grant, I think was the reason that we had.
Yeah, mentioned, right? MC, where's the roof?
It's 26900, 43100, 4191069. Coates Street. Now, did you get those new bids? Lawson, Barry Greason?
Yes, and that's one I, I, it's not official, but I could feel comfortable in taking 30,000 out of there because of the annex. We still don't have the numbers on the public works, which we know are gonna be kinda high. And I did tell him my timeline on that to try to get it, but I did get the one for over there and it was considerably less. And I can do that under maintenance instead of having to go through that long process. We still have to vet it out. So basically, in my head, and MC can correct me if I'm wrong, because we figured at what point we could drop and still feel comfortable and meet the state regulations. So if we went with the 10%, as Cale recommended, we would need to cut 147,000. Well, we took, we reduced it yesterday to see what we could absolutely, if we had to live with. You figure it and make sure.
Go ahead, say what you're thinking.
I believe with the 10 cent that you would, you could make this year, it's the next year. When you got ready, when we got to the point to budget next year, you're gonna be looking at the same thing all over again.
I'd say next year, we still.
Absolutely, I think that was, I don't know what the thinking was, but to me, that Don Hall building was a bad investment. I can't see using 16,000 square feet of building. What are the utilities gonna run it?
I'd say sell that.
That thing is huge, you know, and you've got two more payments due on it. I would've thought it would've been better to took that money and just build another fire hall like we did out in the park. It's just silly to me, that building is. I don't know, of course, nobody's really told us, you know, what the idea was behind it or the design or anything like that, so, you know, we're coming at it from a different perspective than everybody that voted for it.
Well, for one thing, you couldn't build another fire hall like is in the park for what it paid for that building.
Well, that building's way too big. Way too big for four fire trucks to be in there. You know, one side of it's 10,000 square feet, the other side's 5,000 square feet. It's just huge. I'm reluctant to bring up Dogwood again because I get in trouble about that because I do an event, I know what it is to do an event. You know, we don't do it unless we've got the money to pay for it, it just don't happen. And I have had several people call me, email me and whatever, that if their taxes are going up because of Dogwood, to get rid of it. I mean, I can't, I'm just telling you what people are telling. And I've talked to some of the people on the square, the businesses, they don't like it. Employees, most of them don't like it, so, I mean, you can take it for what it is.
I'm hearing the same thing myself, personally.
And day on the hill, I think $8,000 to put on barbecue dinner for 400 people is ridiculous. We do it all the time. We couldn't spend $8,000 on a barbecue dinner. There's cheaper ways to do it, I know that they used to fix all the stuff and take it theirself, but now they're, you know, we're getting it catered. So, you know, are we gonna justify 300, 400 people in Nashville and putting on a big festival and raising people's taxes?
We've got about 20 minutes if we're gonna make any progress.
I think we can do away with the day on the hill every other year, do away with it this coming year, but do it every other year and be plenty, because we're not after grants like we're. Dogwood has only cost us one penny, but I do have it throwed up to me everywhere.
Two cents, it's two cents of the tax increase.
Well, 20,000.
It's not 20,000, everybody keeps saying 20,000. What about the $11,500 in overtime? It's not $20,000. Not to mention everything else that I never can find in here, like the fireworks and the billboard skins and, you know, it's under other things, it should be under Dogwood.
If you take out day on the hill at 8,000, roof at 30,000, Dogwood at 20,000, and the 501(c)(3) is at 24,250, you're at 82,250. Eighty-two, two fifty would be reduced.
Which would be about 4 cents. So even at 4 cents, that's gonna put us at, what, 18, 18 cent? No, I'm sorry, 16 cent tax increase.
I can, I can live with that.
So does that big year end with overtime?
Actually, no.
What was that amount, you knew it?
$11,500. Ninety-three, seven fifty.
So we're between 14, 14 and 15 cents. How does everybody feel about 15 cents?
I can support it with those cuts.
Then next year, I guess we'll be back here again looking at, you know, if we can move forward with that rate or look for more cuts or hopefully not another tax increase.
Hope this picks up next year.
Well, yeah, I mean, that.
You've got the reassessment of property next year outside.
That, the, the, the increase in tax revenue is, is an unknown. The increase from property tax is an unknown. But we anticipate that increase.
You know, sign down the street here, you sign, new business going in there. And we hope the breed is getting ready to do something.
So it's Councilman Spencer, what do you?
What'd you review during the cuts?
8,000 day on the hill, 30,000 on the roof, 20,000 plus 11,5 for the Dogwood. So we're cutting the Dogwood out, is that right? Completely out. And.
I would not leave for cutting Dogwood out.
24,5 for contributions, all the contributions out except the library.
I'm not for ending Dogwood, but I can go with not funding it at that level and expect that group to get private sponsorship to replace it.
In that scenario, would you anticipate being able to cover any overtime? Or would that overtime number be in there? It'd have to stay in, yeah, yeah.
Jean, let me ask, ask you a question. Since you've headed up Dogwood several years and got that experience and you always did a great job, but let me ask you this question. The steering committee, can they, how do you think they would feel about making obligations, financial obligations initially and not having any funds to support that and not be able to come to the city for that until those monies and revenues started coming in? Will they take that leap of faith?
Well, it would be hard to book anything until you had gifts promised. You know, I mean, you just wouldn't be able to.
And in that scenario, they wouldn't be able to go to the city and say, I need 3,000 or we need 5,000 to, to make these initial contacts and agreements because the city wouldn't have it budgeted.
Right.
Are we putting a lot of weight on the steering committee and kinda buying them to not move out there and move forward with that?
We, we are, but, you know, if you go back historically, Highland Hall was a city event. And after several years, it was privatized and now Kiwanis does it. Maybe it's time for, to do the same thing with the Dogwood Festival. Maybe it's time for a community group to step up and take that thing on and do it for our community.
For the downtown group, yeah, because that was mentioned. It's enhancement of downtown, it's part of downtown, it should fall under them.
I mean, we, I think we can be proud of the fact that we've put forth 12 great years of it.
There was no budget when it first started.
And we, you know, it just, you know, maybe time to let another group take care of it.
Well, I think in the very, very beginning, I think that's what we had hoped that would happen.
Eventually.
Eventually, that, that.
Group would step forward.
Somebody, you know, somebody would, you know, rubbery club or somebody.
But that, I need to correct, I need to correct one thing, that there's a misunderstanding here. That seed money was there from year one. I mean, we did the seed money year one, didn't we not, Beth?
You're talking about for Dogwood?
The 20,000 seed money, yes. It's always been there.
But that was told, that's all they had. If they got anything or did anything, the money had to be raised through sponsorships.
Well, they, over the years, they've had varying success with private sponsorships.
Well, we, I mean, it was the same thing with Highland Hall. When we first took it over, the city gave us $10,000 to start and we paid it back. And we didn't need it again after that. It was to get us started. So the same thing needs to go on with Dogwood and it's done the reverse. Now it's more dependent on the city money than it was when it started.
Maybe, maybe we can move in that direction, but keep it going until then and try to seek a Kiwanis Club to take it over or some other group. It, it brings a, it's such a goodwill for the city of Winchester and such a tradition. I hate to see us just, just cut it out completely. It's, there's a lot of people that enjoy it. There may be some people that don't want us to do it, but there, there's a lot of good that it does. I think we've all experienced going over to Kids Zone and seeing these kids play. And I think it's a wonderful gesture that the city does for our community.
I agree with that. Can we, I mean, what's wrong with asking the downtown group if they could take it over?
I don't think there's anything wrong with asking them. I, I think, but here today, I think we need to, as a city, we need to move forward with it and then try to seek people like the WTPC or the downtown group or someone, Kiwanis Club or someone to take it over, if that's what the direction we want to go in. But to sit here today and just cut it out because of money, I, I, I think we need to move forward.
Well, it's, you know, can we, can we agree, you know, to have, like Jeanie mentioned, Kiwanis got seed money for one year, they paid back, can we agree to do a one-year seed money for somebody to take over in this next year?
I think that'd be fine.
Man, you know, it seems fair. Instead of just completely pulling the rug out from underneath them, give them an opportunity to transition it to WPC, W, what did I say?
WDPC.
Yeah.
So you're proposing to put that 20-plus overtime back in?
To transition it to the downtown group.
I would like to think if the WDPC hears that we're cutting it out, that they'll step right up to the plate and say, let us carry it on.
Well, that's, that would be fantastic.
They've got the funds to back it.
Right.
They've got the funds to do it because we're giving it to them.
Okay, so, so what, what do y'all wanna do? 15 cents with the cuts that we talked about, which includes the Dogwood, will put us next year at a little over 1.3, which will be at, it will be fine for our reserve. The next year after that will be at 800, about $830,000, which will be a little short. But we would anticipate that sales tax and property tax would, would help bring that back up.
And what about the dime?
10 cents would put us at $1,250,000, which, next year, which will get us okay.
I can go with that.
And then. And then the next year will be at a little over six hundred thousand. So at that point, we'd be trying to make up another six hundred thousand dollars. In my opinion, that might be a stretch from a property tax standpoint and a sales tax standpoint. I mean, I, the fifteen cents is workable with these additional cuts. It's just a matter of, you know, if we want to put what we want to do with the dogwood. But we need to be clear that we're taking out day on the hill with the assumption then that next year, of course, we'll look at it again, but what we talked about right now is that we would go come back on day on the hill next year. We're taking thirty thousand off the roof. And we're cutting all the contributions except to the library. And the dogwood.
Well, on the dogwood, if we're gonna ask that group to consider taking that over, we're still gonna be liable for the overtime because it's in our backyard, so to speak, and we're gonna have to provide security no matter who takes it over. So maybe really the prudent thing to do is to leave eleven five in there and either cut all of the twenty seed money out or reduce it.
Why can't they pay overtime? Why can't they pay people to come in? Have the security.
Well, I mean, let's don't put all of our eggs in that one basket that they will take it over.
Right.
Let's assume that we find someone to take it over. It may be them or it may be someone else. Do we want to keep enough in there to assure that this next year that it will continue if no one, you know, comes forward to take it over? Thirty thousand dollars, you know, probably wouldn't hurt us from a budget standpoint. If my numbers, do I just take the thirty thousand dollars off of each one of those and kind of relate to those? So thirty thousand dollars would be, would still be a little over one point three after, at the end of next year and we'd be at about eight hundred instead of about eight hundred and thirty the year after that in nineteen. So it's still doable, assuming that things fall into place for us for budget year nineteen.
You know, I think before you do that and commit to really trying to privatize it to somebody this year, make this a transition year, I think, I think that's, you know, to me, that's reasonable.
And, you know, maybe if we don't, if we don't find someone that'll come forward with it, then, you know, we try to find someone and then the next year, we consider whether or not we keep it in.
Jim C., she has her questions on some platters numbers.
I know the numbers, the figures that I had been working off with last week's budget.
And it may have been on the internet, I would have looked at the run.
Okay, for instance, the Swinplex operating supplies came in last week at twenty-five thousand. Their other contractual services, ten thousand, and the pool supplies was still each time within twenty. Because we had discussed, wondered why they didn't get bids on those as well.
Okay.
Anyway.
So they're, in what you're seeing today, in this first year, these are what you're seeing?
No, no, they're different. Just like, and the pool supplies used to be under the parks, but it's now.
No, we divided, we divided those things out between the park and the Swinplex. So the higher numbers have been divided out between the two departments, the two divisions. And that you had been.
Councilwoman Wom, where are you?
They had been ten.
Ready to go.
At what?
With what scenario? With which one?
Who went down?
Fifteen or sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
And then what about the dogwood?
And if this went down as well.
Dogwood, I hate to see it cut out, I hate to keep, the city taxpayers pay for something that's used by thousands of other people.
So what's your, what's your opinion?
I could go with it.
Well, it's thirty, I mean, basically.
But I am getting a lot of calls, people, no good cut out, no good, that's what people were calling me and saying, personally.
It's approximately thirty thousand dollars if we leave it in.
I mean, I think it's great that it came back down.
Not a significant impact on where we would be as far as reserves are concerned. It just changes our reserve number by about thirty thousand dollars.
We put it in there, try and get somebody to take it over. But if they don't, nobody take it over, we're not gonna do it ourselves.
Then the next year, I mean, we'll be revisiting this again.
These are better.
Chris, what's your?
I'm for leaving the dogwood in, but the fifteen or sixteen cents is fine. I just, I hate for the city to have to revisit a tax increase in twenty-four months again. But that's, unless, unless our revenues really change, that's what the city will be facing.
I mean, there's a good possibility that that would have, could happen.
If you have to do that, why raise taxes now for two years? I mean, if you go in the bank to borrow a hundred thousand dollars, why get two hundred thousand when a hundred thousand will do you? Wait till you need it before you go borrow it.
Okay, that's right. Jean?
Well, we've also got in here borrowing the money to fix the roof and stuff. And that's a question for me. We could always do a bond issue instead of borrowing the money. But I'm not for a tax increase.
At all?
At all.
Okay. So you're not supportive of this even at fifteen cents? Okay, the only way you would support is at zero.
I might do ten if I don't figure out.
Okay, okay, all right. Cil? You gonna stay at ten?
I'm good at fifteen. With the, with the cuts.
Are we, I guess, Cil, are you, I mean, are you at ten? You're not, you're not willing to move?
Right now, when I can find, when I can figure out the percentage for small businesses, fifteen versus ten. I'm just, I'm thinking of small businesses.
Okay. It's eight o'clock. Sounds like that we do have, we won't know if we take a vote, but it sounds like that we do have a consensus at fifteen cents. So Martha Carroll, can we, are we gonna change anything at this point or are we just gonna make the vote?
Bring my list back. You're, the first, nine eighty-five, nothing changes because it's the current year. Ordinance nine eighty-six, we would have to amend the paperwork that you have. The motion would have to have an amendment with the cuts that you would like put in. And then a vote can be gone for.
So are we gonna mention those as amending it?
Because your paperwork does not show these cuts. You would have to say amend with these cuts. And then the third one is your tax rate.
And the tax rate would be fifteen cents?
We may let you speak to that.
The, going back to C, item C. Councilman Snead and Councilman Spencer and Councilwoman Wom, are we in agreement then that we're leaving the dogwood as is? But we're gonna work toward this year trying to find someone to take that over and revisit it next year? Is that, am I right? Okay.
What about the overtime for the dogwood?
Get some clues.
Okay.
Cut sixty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
And we need to make sure that we note what we're cutting in the minutes.
So what does that do with the E?
Let's see.
E.
We just have library.
Oh, it would only be library with them. And I will read that it's written and then there would have to be, the vote would be to exclude everything but the library.
Okay.
Because the paperwork, that's what this is.
You also got downtown in it.
Okay, you got what we need? You gonna read these till we have them? Okay. Thank you, counsel, for meeting early again today for our work session. Working through the budget. I appreciate it, it's not easy and hadn't been and I know that. And we've dealt with a lot of numbers and at times it has been confusing. But I think we're on the right track. So having said that, we will now call our special call meeting to order Tuesday, June the twenty-first, two thousand sixteen. And first item on the agenda is unfinished business, is reading of June fourteenth, two thousand sixteen minutes. What's the will of counsel on that?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Spencer.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Alexander. Discussion, all those in favor, aye. Those no. Okay, minutes stand approved. Item B is the second reading of ordinance nine eighty-five and ordinance amending appropriations ordinance nine seven eight for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. What's the will of the council on that?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Snead.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spencer. Any discussion? This will be a roll call.
Councilman Snead.
Aye.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bates.
Aye.
Councilman Spencer.
Aye.
Councilman Wom.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item C is the second reading of ordinance nine eighty-six and ordinance making appropriations for the administration, operation and maintenance and capital expenditures of each department. What's the will of the council on this?
Roll call.
Sorry?
Roll call.
Yeah, we will. But I needed.
Do you need a motion with the amendment?
Need a motion, just, yeah, just to bring it, bring it forward.
Okay, I would move to, I would move to approve nine eighty-six with the amended cuts that we have listed.
And that was eight thousand dollars.
Eight thousand.
On the hill, thirty thousand dollar roof, twenty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars on contribution. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, we've got a motion.
Second.
And a second from Councilman Spencer. Any discussion? These will be made, be corrected on our next special call paperwork and noted in our minutes. No discussion, this will be a roll call.
Councilman Snead.
Aye.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Nay.
Councilwoman Bates.
Nay.
Councilman Spencer.
Aye.
Councilman Wom.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item D is the second reading of ordinance nine eighty-seven and ordinance assessing and levying taxes within the corporate limits of the city of Winchester, Tennessee for the property tax year two thousand and sixteen. Got a second, discussion. Again, this will be corrected in our next document and is a matter of record within the, within the minutes. This will be a roll call.
Councilman Snead.
Aye.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Nay.
Councilwoman Bates.
No.
Councilman Spencer.
Aye.
Councilman Wom.
Aye.
Okay. Item E is resolution eight sixty-three, making appropriations to nonprofit charitable and nonprofit civic organizations for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. And we have made some changes to that as well.
Read this one as is.
Yeah, okay.
Resolution eight sixty-three, whereas the city council Winchester feels it's in the best interest of the community to financially support certain nonprofit charitable and nonprofit civic organizations functioning in the best interest of the community and whereas such organizations could not operate without assistance through public funding, whereas these facilities and services benefit the citizens and businesses of the community, whereas the organizations that the city of Winchester has seen fit to offer financial assistance to and the amount of said assistance for the below listed facilities and services that benefit the citizens of our community. Grant to adult activity center, five thousand. Grant to Frank County Library, twenty-eight thousand five hundred. Grant to education, two thousand. Grant to summer music program, two thousand. Grant to Frank County senior citizens, five thousand five hundred. Grant to OGL museum, one thousand. Grant to Heaven of Hope, twenty-five hundred. Grant to disabled American veterans, two hundred and fifty. And grant to financial, excuse me, Franklin County Provincial Coalition, five thousand. And grant to Winchester Downtown Program, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred. For a total of four hundred and nine thousand two hundred and fifty. Now therefore, be it known and resolved that the above listed nonprofit charitable and nonprofit civic organizations do function in the best interest of the community and are hereby approved for assistance by the mayor and city council in the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Okay, counsel, you've heard the, the reading of resolution eight sixty-three with the changes. No, that was including the changes, that was without the changes, pardon me. Okay, you've heard the reading of the ordinance, what's the will of the council?
Need a motion with the change being only given to the library.
And the Winchester Downtown Program is a transfer.
Okay.
Is a transfer.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so your motion is for eight sixty-three to support the library and the downtown?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Alexander.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spencer, discussion. This will be a roll call.
Councilman Snead.
Aye.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bates.
No.
Councilman Spencer.
Aye.
Councilman Wom.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, that concludes our business, we'll move into communications and again, I'd just like to say, I thank everyone. We'll move into communications, and again, I'd just like to say I thank everyone for their hard work and their diligence comments that they've made in, in trying to get at, at a budget that is workable and something that, that we feel like that, that can pass. So thank you again, and we will meet next Tuesday for our third and final reading on budget issues at eight o'clock here in the courtroom. Councilman Snead, any, any communication, comment?
No sir.
Okay. Councilwoman Alexander?
Not at this time.
Okay. Councilwoman Bates?
No.
Councilman Spencer?
No sir.
Councilman Wallen?
No.
Okay. City administrator?
Yes sir.
Okay, any updates or reports from department heads? Okay, that concludes our business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay. We had a motion to adjourn by Councilman Wallen.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spencer. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Stand adjourned. Thank y'all.